And then the other would wake up and they grab the toy and after, oh gosh.
Good, yeah.
Fun weekend at Grandma's?
Yes.
Most definitely.
And here's what my puppy did, took his dog food and strung it all over the floor before I.
Well, why not?
Okay. Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters.
Here. Let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
A flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and never be in justice for all.
Okay, let's have the health center people come up. We have a proclamation that reads, for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventive healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas the country's largest primary care network, health centers now serve as the healthcare home for over 30 million Americans in over 8,000 delivery sites across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Whereas every day, the health centers are developing new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their community. Whereas the Sulan Community Health Center is a critical economic engine, helping to power the local economy by generating millions of dollars in combined economic impact and job creation. Health centers saves the entire health system billions of dollars annually by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of costly or healthcare settings. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 7th through the 11th, 2023, as National Health Center Week, and extend our appreciation to the Sulan Community Health Center for its years of dedicated service to the people of Sulan. We'd like to present this to you and want to thank you guys so much for all that you do. I don't think the majority of the people in our community understand the significant impact you have, so thank you for what you do and say what you would.
Thank you, Mayor Scott, and we thank you, City Council members, also for your support. I'm Mary Captain Dolan. I'm the CEO of Sulan Community Health Center. And on behalf of our board and our 350 staff members, we want to say thank you for all you do to support the work we do. This past year, we served over 35,000 people in this community and provided over 125,000 dental, medical, and behavioral health visits. We also provided onsite and virtual interpreting for over 52 languages that were requested by our staff. Our biggest challenge that we have is that we can't grow fast enough to meet the increasing needs of our community. So we thank you for your support as we increase our footprint, expand our services, and ever enhance our access to the patients who need us the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Civil Service Commission, Jeanette Ruiz-Pena, please come up, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Ruiz-Pena. I currently work at Mercy One Medical Center in the HR department. I am a talent acquisition partner there. I've been with Mercy One for two years, but have been working in HR for nine years. I received my associate's in HR management at Western Iowa Tech and am currently finishing my bachelor's in healthcare management through Bellevue University. I don't currently serve on any boards. This is my first time applying to serve on a board, and I was inspired after taking a leadership development program at Northeast Community College, which ended two weeks ago. I have since embraced the philosophy that anybody wanting to be a leader must first be a servant, and if you want to lead, you must serve. I want you all to know that I understand that this is a working commission, and I will show up. Creating fair and equal opportunities for all employees is important to me, and the work I do daily and civil service workers are crucial to this community, and I feel a push to serve at this time in my life. Any questions?
I wouldn't have any questions after that.
I was going to say.
You answered them, very good.
I'm not going to lie, I watch the five minutes or the YouTube videos that you have out there to see what everybody else did. I'm like, let me make sure I cover what I need to cover.
That's funny. Any questions?
That's another positive, you come prepared.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you know, appreciate it. Yamanashi Sister City, Tyala Marsh, Tyala Marsh, come on up and tell us why you want to serve.
Not big on public speaking. I would like to serve because I want to see how our city connects with the sister city in Japan. Sorry, I'm nervous, this is new to me.
You're good.
I'm not big on public speaking. I want to see how our cities connect and what we can do to better each other.
Have you got any ideas where you, you know, make that first step to improve, you know, relationship? We're always trying to keep those lines of communication open.
I don't have any ideas, but it'd be nice to work with people around me to produce ideas in order to, you know, see what we can do for each other.
Okay.
Are you getting on at the right time? Because I think they're coming to Sioux City here shortly to have a meeting for our 20th?
The 25th.
25th and 1st.
In November.
That's amazing.
It is, your timing's really good. And I really liked what you wrote in your application about why you have an interest in this committee. So thank you for making the application.
Thank you very much.
Very good, well done. Anyone else?
See, you did great.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the consent agenda, 3 through 16E, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come to the podium. As I read that item, if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns at the end of the meeting. Remember to always state your name and address for the record, and remember to limit your comments to three minutes. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the July 20th and 24th City Council Minutes. Four is a motion appointing Dawn Kimmel to the Transit System Advisory Board. Five is a resolution amending 2023-0682 pertaining to the honorary street naming policy and application to correct inconsistencies. Six is a resolution temporarily closing various streets for a downtown live concert. Seven is a resolution canceling the bid opening for the 41st Street sanitary sewer improvement project. Eight is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Military Road and Castleman Street storm sewer repair project. Nine are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a joint participation agreement with IDOT for the State Transit Assistant Grant to support public transit services. Items nine, B, one and two are resolutions accepting the grant agreements from the FAA to partially fund the Northeast taxi lane reconstruction project at the airport. Tanner actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving consulting services agreement with Black and Beach for the Harbor Drive Water Main Upsized Project. B is a resolution authorizing a federal aid agreement with the IDOT for the South Cecilia Street Reconstruction Project. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to CW Suter &amp; Son for the Renewable Fuels Heat Pump Replacement Project. How old is this pump? Not very.
Tom Pingle, Utilities. You're right, Mr. Mayor, the pump's only about three years old. It was designed in a location where it was not going to last very long. So this is about saying too much because I don't know what I can say legally, but this will be a part of the case moving forward.
I need to abstain. I have a conflict of interest. I represent CW Suter &amp; Son. D is a resolution approving work order number one with RS and H to Iowa for the Tea Hanger Development and Site Work Project at the airport. E is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with Trail Solutions International Bounty Biking Association, Bicycling Association for the Cone Mountain Bike Park Project. F is a resolution approving a contract amid continental restoration for the Tyson Event Center Tuck Pointing and Sealant Project. G is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with the structural concrete for the Sergeant Floyd River Museum and Welcome Center Ramp Repair Project. Eleven are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving an updated job description for the Public Works Director. B is a resolution amending the authorized personnel complement position classification manual and salary schedule by adding a traffic signal technician and reclassifying two signal electricians to traffic signal technicians in the Public Works Department. Twelve are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Peterson Contractors for the South Bridge Business Coal Link Railspur Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Penrell Construction for the Andrew Avenue South Utility Improvement Project. Are they done? Because their equipment's still there. I should have sent you an email on that. Are they done? Because they're, when we were down there last week talking to somebody about buying land down there, he said they weren't done, the other contractor. Are they done and gone?
Gordon Fair, City Engineer, well, there's two contractors down there working. One's on Alicia and one's on Andrew. But the Andrew one, I'm pretty sure is all done.
Penrell got them both?
No. Was it Penrell's equipment?
Okay. Huh? It was Penrell's equipment, yeah. Okay, hopefully they're done. C is a resolution approving partial settlement of a claim and authorizing payment. D is a resolution approving partial settlement of a claim and authorizing payment. E is a resolution approving fund transfers for June. F is a motion approving claims and expenses and receipts for June. Thirteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the Underground Electric Easement in the Combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Mid-America Energy Company and scheduling a hearing. B is a resolution scheduling a hearing on the proposed amendment number one for the Combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Project area. C is a resolution proposing to sell property adjacent to 115 Palm Metal Street. The petitioners, Ralph and Debbie Modlin, Deborah Modlin. Fourteen are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to the OTW Safety for two-lighted X runway markers. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Bert Gurney and Associates for the repair of a Fairbanks pump. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Jensen Motors for three Ford Maverick all-wheel-drive pickups.
Mayor, I'd like to chat just a minute on this one. Travis, just was really wondering, I thought a lot about this contract and different vehicles that we're pursuing and utilizing, and a citizen had actually reached out to me and was just talking about more hybrid electric options and different things municipalities are kind of going to and what options we have. So then I kind of did a little more research into the 2024 Mavericks and kind of what options, packages they have. I'm assuming that this isn't the hybrid or full EV, or is it the hybrid with the all-wheel drive? I think it is, but it didn't say it here, so I wasn't sure.
Travis, Boilock Fleet Supervisor, no, these are not the hybrids.
And so it just kind of led me, then, the citizen and I, we're going down kind of a rabbit hole, talking about different ones that municipalities are going to as far as fleet vehicles, especially vehicles that maybe don't need to be, or, you know, like aren't demanded on in different situations that would, you know, require a more rugged vehicle, I guess, you know what I mean, that type of thing, and just what they were utilizing. And then we actually were looking at police vehicles and what's coming out there. And now you have the new Ford Lightning, that actually they're rolling out an entire police package, as well as with the Chevy Blazer, an entire police package. And then, so we crunched a whole bunch of numbers while he did, and then he shared it with me and walked me through it. And I think there's really a lot of cost savings to kind of going through some of this. And I would like us to start at least somewhere of looking into this. And I, sorry I didn't give you a heads up, and same with Teresa, I would have loved to have given her a heads up as well. But it came up in a conversation today, and I just said I wanted to at least talk with you a little bit about it here today, and just urge you to maybe if we can get a task force together, or if you can get together with purchasing and Teresa, and just try to make recommendations, even if it's to look into the feasibility. What have other cities already done, and what would make the most sense? If they're already doing police fleet vehicles, is that where we start, is with a few of them and see what the cost is going forward?
We currently have four hybrid vehicles now.
And a lot of these are actually the fully electric and moving towards that. And so hybrids, great. And I obviously would encourage all of our vehicles to do that because there's no reason, I mean, because my boss has the exact same Chevy, or has the exact same Pacifica, except hers is a plug-in. She doesn't remember the last time she filled it up with gas besides vacations, because I forget how many hundred miles it gets. She commutes to and from work, drives around the city, runs her kids all around, plugs it into a normal outlet at night, isn't purchasing gas, isn't costing her a ton of electricity. It just, if we just have city, you know, employees running around town and doing inspections, doing different things, I don't understand why we wouldn't go to that and try to save some money.
How do you do it with police cars, though? Because don't, not every police officer has a car. They, right? So you got.
Correct.
I mean, police would be the hardest one, it would seem to me, because they're out on the street the whole night and day with no time to charge.
Right. To be able to rotate through and make a charge, yeah.
Right.
And that I don't know, and maybe it's smaller.
I have the hybrid that plugs into the normal outlet on my Jeep. And if it's zero, it takes about six hours using that outlet. But you can bump it up to, I guess, a 220 or something, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll go a little bit faster, like three hours. But.
Absolutely.
Same thing. I never fill up with gas unless I go out of town. I manage very easily on a daily basis.
And Mayor, maybe some of the different police ones, I wondered, you know, on a smaller unit where they each get their own car, maybe that is the case. I don't know. But I just, and I don't need an answer, I'm not going to hold up this contract, that's not my, I'm not going to try to do that to you here, because I'm sure we need these, right, to be able to rotate in. And so, but I would like a recommendation. I would like to see us at least trying something and saying, look, we tried a fully electric vehicle, or we tried these three options. I mean, I'm looking at buying my mom a Prius because she's commuting back and forth between Okoboji and here now, and like 260,000 miles is what a lot of them are having and they're still selling. So I just, I think it's worth at least doing our due diligence, and I'd appreciate.
You're going to buy your mom a car? Good job.
Hey, she's coming down to help me out a lot, so I'm trying to do my part.
A good boy.
But I would just appreciate it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
E is a resolution awarding a purchase order electric pump for flight, submersible pump equipment for the Southeast Morningside Lift Station. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to electric pump for the Southeast Morningside Pump On-Site Labor. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license. Sixteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes four to zero. Seventeen's a motion selecting six of the following nine applicants for the Human Rights Commission.
Well, yeah, I feel bad. I know Matthew had some ideas and thoughts. I guess I can throw out some of mine, and I was the one that asked for this to be deferred, just because I wanted a chance to look through all the candidates and make a more educated decision. After looking through these, I think it's a difficult decision. You don't want to exclude anyone. But after looking through their applications, their interests, the areas that they're involved in, I came to the conclusion and would move that we appoint Val Uken, Paula Crandall, Mandy Engelcardy, Swain Magi, Jesse Lent, and Chris Courtney. What's very sad about the people that I'm not moving forward or I'm not motioning is Gary Lewis and Terry McGaffin, and they're both friends of mine. So I worked with Terry for a number of years, and I know Gary personally. But I think that, given the experience of all of the others, Val as on the board member of multiple nonprofits, but also working with the native community and public health, Paula Crandall as a former school counselor and with grant writing experience, Mandy Engelcardy at Girls Inc., Swain as a former college professor and part of the Latinx community, Jesse is heavily involved in gay pride events, is a pastor at the, at a church, and then with Chris Courtney and his involvement in Sulan Cares and our youth, I just thought that that would be diverse representation, so.
I'll second it. Who's the male than Jesse?
Chris.
Just one male.
Chris. Chris Courtney and Jesse Lent.
Okay, but you can't do that.
Four females.
Oh, yeah, you two.
Four females.
My bad.
Four, two.
So there are, there are three males, I believe.
No, I don't think so. No. So Val.
There are three male candidates.
Correct.
Three male candidates, but he's not choosing three.
Councilwoman Waters, would you just?
Yep, yep.
For me?
You're fine.
Thank you.
So Val Uken, Paula Crandall, Mandy Engelcardy, Swain Magi are the females. The males would be Jesse Lent, Chris Courtney.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Not a problem with any of them. I'm just, I have a whole problem with the whole process here, but I'll go ahead and say yes for today.
Waters?
I understand hesitation, or I'm not sure I love the process either, but I under.
No, it's not about even that process. It's just, if you look at, we hired additional people and we have less, less things being done in that commission than what we did a year ago, and we hired an additional person. I have a real problem with committees that scream for more people and then do less. I don't think that, I think that's what government gets blamed about doing every day, and that's not acceptable to me. So, but I'll vote yes today.
Aye.
Moore?
I vote aye, but I also want to point out, we keep these applicant, the other applications on file for one year after they.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Yes.
So, you know, as vacancies occur, we'll, we'll come back to those applicants.
Yes, they're, everybody's so qualified, and it'd be nice if we could have.
Passionate about the work.
I agree with Council, yeah, Councilmember Waters, your comments about it's hard, it was hard to pick, but I was really pleased that we had the number of applicants, too.
Eighteen's a hearing on demolition resolution declaring a structure to be dangerous or dilapidated property at 112 West Third Street. Darrell, the hearing is now open.
Darrell Boilock Inspection Services Manager, this property, there's a large sinkhole that developed alongside of the foundation last fall. We've had a lot of water going in, and it's just getting worse, and we want to get this one down and gone before the next winter season comes about. Otherwise, I would have waited until the October placard hearing, but I want to get moving on this and get it taken care of because it's not being done.
The owner been contacted?
The owner has been contacted.
The answer is they're not going to fix it?
They're not going to fix it.
Anyone else be heard? The hearing is now closed.
Do we need a motion?
I do.
You just opened the hearing, I thought.
No, I moved it, and then you opened the hearing.
You need a second?
Yes.
I'll second it. Sorry, Mr. Motion.
The hearing's now open. Anyone be heard? If not, vote. Hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Passes four, zero. Nineteen's a hearing in ordinance amending Chapter 12.12 Water Works and Municipal Code pertaining to water well protection. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zeros. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twenty's a hearing in ordinance vacating West 21st Street between Everett and Kellogg Street and repealing 2023-0127 and 2023-0528. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zeros. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Twenty-one's a resolution proposing to sell property abutting 2105 Everett Street and rescinding all conflicting resolutions. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four zero twenty-two's a resolution proposing to sell property abutting 2200 Kellogg Street and rescinding all conflicting resolutions. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four zero twenty-three is a resolution, I do twenty-three, what did I just do?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Twenty-three's a resolution proposing sell property abutting 1915 Everett Street and rescinding all conflicting resolutions. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four zero twenty-four's a resolution proposing to sell property abutting 2214 Kellogg Street and rescinding all conflicting resolutions. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes four zero twenty-five's a resolution approving amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Bacon Creek Dam A11 Reconstruction Project deferred from July 24th, 2023. Somebody can move that?
I'll move it. Second.
You just hear for questions?
Just for questions.
Oh, okay.
I hope, no, it won't matter, but the way I read that contract is that we're supposed to be part and party to those inspections that we, but I'm sure you disagree with, so I'm just.
Oh, with the DNR?
Yeah.
And they have participated.
They've been doing them. I'm saying, we should be a party to that. You guys didn't even know what the contract said until recently. That's all I'm saying. I think we should be out there when they do the inspection to make sure we know what they're talking about. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't think we should rely totally upon them.
Parks, Parks does have a representative out there with them. Engineering doesn't, no.
Because Kelly said he's done part of it, right? Or he's been out there with them?
Okay, not every, okay.
No, I don't know. I was asking.
Yeah, it does, and actually it has it on one of the reports, too. It does say Kelly's, Kelly Bach was there. Not on the last one. It doesn't say if anybody was there.
But in the past, it's been Kelly.
Yep.
What's that?
In the past, it's been Kelly, but they didn't note that anyone was there with them this time.
Yeah, not this last.
That's my point. If you read the contract, we're supposed to be there as part of the inspection. That's all I'm trying to say.
So Gordon, do you think that we could assign someone from engineering instead?
Or engineering, or whoever makes the most sense.
Usually they contact Kelly, and he's been the one that's been out there, going out there with them, because most of it's just maintenance items. So, yes, we can make sure that someone's there.
Probably more vegetation, more different things like that, right? I mean, could be.
Do that, too. Do that too.
Passes four zero. Twenty six's a resolution approving a master services agreement with US Bank. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four zero twenty seven's a resolution approving consulting services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for the wastewater treatment plant facility plan improvement project. You'll have to move that.
I'll move it.
Second.
Tom Pingel, Utilities. This is for the Phase One design. Just want to kind of just go back over what.
Phase one intends?
Everything it is. We sent this out to six firms. Two of those firms decided to team up, Black and Beach and Hazen for this project. Once we got to the point where we got the scope and the fee, staff and Hazen worked closely for a few weeks and rigorously tried to reduce the scope. We saved about 1.1 million dollars by reducing the scope, but still kept what we thought was needed to keep this as a successful project. What's in the scope is site survey, geotech investigations, because we don't have a lot of as builds from previous projects from the sixties, seventies and the, those type of projects. So the investigations to make sure structure that is going to be replaced. The new sites have stable ground and stuff like that for it. Design, construction admin. So, design is about half the fee, construction admin's about the other half. So, the construction admin's just as important as the design. So they'll have multiple people there every day watching over their, all the other construction. Post-construction services and startup. This, again, Phase One, addresses condition issues with the plant, addresses safety issues, provides reliability and meeting regulatory compliance and NPDS permit. Provides long-term odor control at the wastewater plant and the three lift stations. Riverside, which is a big one, that's the one where our residents are living, right next to the lift station. York and Floyd. York and Floyd were chosen because those are the two largest ones and they definitely have lots of odor coming out of them. This is not a Band-Aid. Phase One is not a Band-Aid. This is a comprehensive project to rebuild the wastewater treatment plant. So if you guys have any questions, Hazen is here today to answer any of your guys' questions. Thank you.
What's the breakout? Why, why is Black and Beach, either one of them are big enough to do that without the others? So.
They are big enough to do that without the others, but due to how large this project is and how much heat is on this project, if you will, from EPA, IDNR, even our own local politics. So we decided it's, it's good to have more eyes on this and more engineers that are experts in this to be a part of the project.
So, and basically, I mean, Tom, and we spoke a little bit about this. We received an email from a gentleman, one of the folks that was on the committee and is a, I think, former engineer, but just had worked through this and had some concerns. Tried breaking it down and was thinking about the amount of hours and things that goes into a project to make up a sum this high. But I think what you were saying in your outline and what you and I talked a little bit about is just the sheer number of people that will be needed to oversee this project, not only on the front end, but also on the back end. Through the design, through the amount of papers and everything that needs to be created, but then also the construction management to make sure that everything is going as planned and as specked, just because of how intentional you have to be or how thoughtful you have to be with the setting up of something this complex. I did, I did find it interesting to think through the amount of people and then the amount of hours and time it would be for four years or however long this will end up being as far as this part, both the design and then the oversight. And I thought too, you did a good job at least explaining to me the sheer volume of what they're creating even in the design. What were you saying? I mean, when we're thinking of the UV project, which is a very large project we're funding through American Rescue Dollars, I think, yeah, a multimillion dollar project and you said it was what, 50 pages to be designed?
Fifty to sixty-five pages of plan sheets on that.
So for a project that's over $7 million, you're going to have 50 to 60 pages of design and your estimates of design for this project were what?
About 1,100 pages. Yep.
So, I mean, when you start thinking about this and real figures of the amount of work that's going to need to be put into this, I said it to you on the phone and I would say it to anyone that I think this dollar amount is shocking.
Yeah, it's a large amount.
He, you read it and it is shocking. And it's hard to grasp, hard to think and break down of what goes into something this complex. So I just appreciate it, at least talking with you about it and hearing what all is going to go into this and where we are with this phase, why this is needed or how that is broken down to be a part of the project. Yeah?
A lot of people are going to be.
Right. And it doesn't just boil down to billable hours. You know, there's so much more involved.
Um, just a clarification for me. I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure it's clear. So the preliminary engineering and detailed design and contractor bidding selection, that's about half of the 38 million?
Yep.
So construction administration alone, that'd be the other half?
Yep, that and startup and post-construction. So they'll, they're not just going to build it, watch the, watch it being built, make sure everything's done. Stay around to train. They're going to write operations and maintenance manuals for every process so that our staff will know how to do it in the book and then they'll train us how to start up the facility as well. And, and the consultant will, or not the consult, the, the contractor will also be a part of that.
Okay. And then on your, on your list of Phase One improvements, what they include, there's, there are several items that are either replacement or upgrades.
Yep.
But then you get to the demolition of the unused plant structures and buildings.
Yep.
Do you know about what percentage that is of the un?
The buildings that are called out here for being for demolition, they are currently unused buildings due to their nature. What I mean by that is they're not in the condition to, for staff to go in and out of these buildings or to store stuff in those buildings. So they've been abandoned for, for decades. They've just been standing. So it, it's time to knock those down and make space for new projects and processes.
So is that kind of a minor portion of?
Yeah, that's very minor.
Okay. It's more of a cleanup.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
I think it's unfortunate that we're doing this. I I wish we could have had a committee meeting and before, but I know it doesn't matter what I say, but I, I just think you're telling the committee that we, we're moving without you or with you. Then I think that's a wrong message to start this thing out with, but what do I? Anyone else be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chris McGowan, Sulan Chamber of Commerce, 101 Pierce Street, Sioux City, Iowa. Number one, I want to thank the council members who have taken the occasion to reach out to the chamber and the business community in the very recent past, including Mr. Padmore, Mayor Scott, Councilwoman Shaner and Councilman Waters. I know that we're trying to reach a constructive dialogue, which is what the chamber has aimed to do for several months, to come to the podium today and to learn that there is a proposal for millions of dollars in design and construction. And the committee, to our knowledge, still has not been finalized. One week ago, we were sent a nine-page application. We were subsequently told that that application wasn't necessary. I honestly don't know what the status of the committee is today. But to learn that, as I understand from the paperwork before this meeting, 37 million dollars, am I, am I correct in that, Mr. Pingel? 37 million dollars. There has been no meeting. There has been no committee formation. There has been no conversation. And to hear Mr. Pingel now talk about the scope, when that's what we thought that the committee was being formed to discuss size, scope, cost, to make sure that we have the very best, best value proposition, to make sure that we have the right parties at the table. None of that has taken place. Furthermore, despite outreach to some of the parties involved, including, including the private sector, no communication with the business community. That is incredibly disappointing. And I think that if we're about to make a 37,000 or 37 million dollar agreement on 1,100 pages of contract, my math says that's roughly 33,000 dollars per page. We haven't been invited to the table, so we don't know what this represents. And that's disappointing.
Anyone else?
What is the status of the committee with the applications? I thought we sent those out to be completed.
We did. We're waiting on completed forms so that we can appoint.
Yeah, but you sent out a whole pack and then you say all you need is their name, address, and email. You don't need a whole packet because we allowed the business community to pick the people that they wanted. So why should they have to go through one of these exercises? Because they're picked for a special reason, not because we're going to enter, or you think we're going to interview? I ask you that question.
No, we're not going to require interviews.
So.
You emailed, you emailed me and asked why we required that and so we could get all the pertinent information.
Right.
If the council wants to waive that, that's well within their purview.
That's not what I said, but why, why do the, why do we need nine pages? What, what you want is right here. You want?
That, and I think there's a conflict of interest form that they need to sign.
Yeah, that's usually a part of it as well.
At that first date, but anyway.
It's just been past practice that we've had.
That's fine. When do you think you're going to have your first meeting?
We're waiting to get the app, we're waiting to get the list from the major industries, who they are. We'll get them appointed and we will then have a meeting.
I was going to say it'd be tough to, that if you don't know the people.
I think we've received four applications from major industries so far, but we don't have them all yet.
Why don't you have a meeting and they can fill them out right there? Let's get.
And I don't know how you would, yeah, when it's best to meet, but yeah.
What? I'm just trying to think how that would tie in with the input on this contract we're looking at entered into now.
They, the, the role of this committee is to work with the chosen design engineer to ensure scope and design meet the needs of the community going forward. We talked about it before the meeting. If things should come out of our meetings with the major industries and the rest of the committee that result in a reduction in scope, then the contract would be reduced and the scope would be changed.
You're, you're in agreement with that? Would you like to make a comment, please, for us about that?
No.
Hazen?
Please.
I, I don't understand, Bob. I'm sorry, but we could have the meeting. The industries have picked who they want. Tom, do you have any doubt who those people are?
I don't know who they are.
Huh?
They reached out initially.
He doesn't know who all the?
Sorry, we don't know who those.
You were furnished a list. We all were furnished a list of who the industry chose.
I didn't get a list.
I didn't, I'm not at a list yet.
I didn't get a list.
I think it might have been more, some of it might have been titles or companies.
But that's fine.
Am I wrong? Did you send me a list or did?
I didn't send it. I, but I got a copy of it from, from Skinner. I must be the only one that got it. I don't know why I got it.
I don't know why.
And not everybody else, but if I got it, I forwarded it to you guys. I don't do business that way. So, I don't know. I, I just.
The last list I received was just a listing of.
The number of positions.
There were some names listed, but then there were others like wastewater engineer and other things and.
So we'll get that together and we'll get an eating schedule.
Yeah.
But this is nothing that prevents them from having their input.
No.
Doing their job. Okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Gary Hobner, Hazen and Sawyer. I'll be the project principal for our team. We would welcome the input from the committee and we're ready to work with them to move forward. The first major chunk of the project is to do what we call preliminary engineering, which is where we develop the basis of design for the project, building upon what was already developed as part of the facilities plan. So we welcome the input from the committee during that phase and, and moving forward throughout the entirety of the project. And whatever the committee in conjunction and discussions, we will incorporate as appropriate into the design. That may mean some reductions in scope. It may mean changes in scope, whatever that means. You know, we're willing to work with the committee.
That sounds good. Chris, did you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to say that we have had no input to this point. 37 million dollars is an incredibly large sum of money. As I just said, for an 1,100-page report, that's 33,000 dollars per page. And our concern, the business community's stated concern from the outset, has been to sit at the table and to make sure that the size, the scope, and the value proposition represented for this project meets the community's needs and also takes into consideration the status of what the private sector is doing in their own interest to make sure that they are prepared to address their wastewater needs moving forward. As you know, and we have discussed at length, several of those and major users are talking about pre-treatment and spending tens of millions of dollars of their own money. And what impact does that have on the size, the scope, and the cost of this project? That is why we have insisted on dialogue. We have not had that dialogue with Tommy and his staff. We have not had that dialogue with Hazen. We have not had that dialogue with McClure. We certainly not, have not had that dialogue with Black and Beach, who I learned today is now coming to the table. Our sense is that we are getting our cart, our horse, our cart way in front of our horses. We don't think that's the best method for communication to ensure the best value proposition. When I hear Mr. Pingel talking about scope, that is something that I thought we were coming together to address, to make sure that we got this right, because that drives a huge factor in what is proposed, is 470 million dollars. The fact that we're struggling to figure out where the committee is, what the status is, that it hasn't met, that we're going forward, is exactly what we have been trying to call to your attention for four or five months now. It's the lack of communication. And we're here, I'm here again today at the podium, respectfully asking, let's start the dialogue. Our interest is similar and parallel to yours, to making sure that we get this right for our taxpaying citizens and our wastewater industry. That's all. There's no hidden agenda.
Mayor, Council, I feel I need to add something. Everything, I agree with everything that Chris is saying, with the exception of, the purpose of this committee is, when we're talking about scope, we're outlining what's in the contract. And we're not talking about scope on sizing. We're not talking about what needs to be rehab versus what can be, needs to be replaced. The scope is, these items need to be done to get the contract completed. The scope you're referring to is sizing.
Okay.
Technologies. That's what this committee will do, but we need an engineer in place to do that.
So, Bob, I appreciate our working relationship. It goes back 20 years. My question for you would be, if that's all we're doing, why is the price tag 37 million dollars?
Because it's a 400, up to a 480 million dollar project that's going to have four to five years of construction, all which needs to be, have construction management. construction management. The eleven-hundred pages you're, isn't, it's not contract documents, it's eleven-hundred designed plan sheets.
Okay. And I'm just saying...
It's about thirteen percent of the cost of a project, which most times, or not architecture, engineering is between fifty, can be between fifteen and twenty.
And what I'm saying is, we haven't had a meeting yet to discuss any of this, and the business community is concerned that we're getting our cart in front of our horses. We've been asking for this dialogue since March or April, and we'd like to see that commence before we commit to spending thirty-seven million dollars on the scope. We may have a difference of opinion on that, Bob, we may agree to disagree, but that's the stated position of the organization I represent and the major industrial users at this time. Thank you.
Well, let's just say this contract passes, because I'm assuming it's going to today. When, if we, if this council doesn't insist upon a date certain that the meeting's going to occur, because I think it should have occurred by now, I have, I know I'm in an extreme minority here today, but I find it unacceptable that we haven't had some kind of an organizational meeting now. I mean, you're starting, you know what, you're getting a black eye from some of the business community through no fault of your own. I would think you'd want to insist upon that as well. So what date? Tom and Bob, you get to pick, what's the day that you think you're going to start this process?
But, Bob, the irony, I guess, I'm sitting, because I guess I feel, you're right, I am in the majority, but I guess I'm the majority in the dark, is that between you and Chris, and maybe Bob, I don't, the rest of council isn't privy to who in the world they would be reaching out to, to set up a meeting.
Well, listen, they didn't just reach out to me. I'll get the, I'll get the, I saw it somewhere. They picked Doug Skinner, they picked somebody from...
Six names, do you have them, Mr. McGowan?
They may not have the name, but they picked the position at Seaboard Triumph. They picked the position at Smithfield. No question, they picked all that, and no question, somebody around here has seen it. You can all tell me you haven't, but you have.
Correct. That's correct, Mayor.
We've seen it, we asked them to provide the contact information, and whether it's names and address and phone number.
Well, let me ask you this question, because I'm really not very smart. How did you send this out to these guys if you didn't know who they were?
I provided the application to Doug Skinner, who sent it out.
Okay.
And then Doug sent it to me, and I contacted the mayor, and I said, this is nine pages, is this necessary? We were told, no, this is not necessary, and subsequent to that...
But I did tell you, you needed the information.
Thank you. Some business committee members have subsequently said they're not interested in serving on this committee, and that's why we'd like to sit down and start to sort this out, because we think that they need to be at the table.
So now some who were interested are no longer interested?
I wish that I could say that that was incorrect, but you are correct, Councilwoman Shainer. There is a level of frustration that has commenced that we're trying to stay ahead of, and we would like very much to bring communication to you so that we can work through this. There are some essential parties, and what they intend to do with their operations as significant wastewater users will, I believe, I'm no expert, but everything that I have been told, has a dramatic impact on what the scope and plan will be. That's what we're trying to make sure we get right. And so when I hear Mr. Pingel talk about scope today, when I hear him talk about a thirty-seven million dollar price tag, and we have not had a chance to sit down and work through these details, that is disconcerting to me, and I hope we can remedy it.
I understand this phase is one that's being designed, worked on first, and the construction of it is everything that we already have on site. It's not going to change the capacity, we're not getting an increase out of that. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Again, this project that is in front of you tonight is for a suite of services, starting with preliminary engineering that establishes the basis of design for both Phases One and Phase Two. So there's a lot that goes into that. Before we even start on the detailed design, putting together plans and specifications for Phase One of construction...
So we have time to start this?
We're gonna...
We'll do the preliminary, very basics, and then if there's input in the next thirty days, there's plenty of time. If there's more input, thirty days, thirty days.
There's plenty, yes. I think the preliminary engineering is six months.
Correct. Will Martin, also with Hazen &amp; Sawyer. You know, we have around six to seven months for preliminary engineering.
Also, Julie, your question, Phase One of construction, the bulk of that is repairing the plant that is falling apart. It's addressing safety issues, it's addressing reliability issues, odor issues. These are, these are major problems at the plant, and that's why the price tag is so large for this first phase of improvements, you know, because it's overdue, and as Tom mentioned, this is not a Band-Aid. We're here to fix this, design the plant to be fixed as if it will be new again.
And Phase One, again, or Phase Two, that adds capacity then at that point? We'll move on to that. But first, we have to get Phase One done, fixed, stabilized, rebuilt, whatever you want to call it, and then we move on. Okay?
Yeah, that's correct. Nope, that's correct. Yeah. And I guess too, Chris, then, to think your point and the mayor's point, what I see before us is very much so just a vote stating, this is who we're working with, this is who's going to be on the project, this is who's at the table in regards to the city. Like, we don't run out and cut a thirty-seven million dollar check and say, okay, here you go, go wild. It's, we say, this is who we want at the table, the language is, an amount ought to exceed this, because you will work up to that, and in these preliminary engineering designs, that's when you adjust to the scope, whether it's from what the committee has come up with, what the feedback has been, warrants you've looked at it through new eyes. And so I guess that's where my thing is, I'm coming to it from, and if I'm misunderstanding, Mayor, you've been through this.
Alex, I know what the contract is.
If I'm, no, I know, so I'm misunderstanding, if I'm misunderstanding that just this vote tonight is signifying, this is who we are working with, this is what the contract is of the firm that we are working with, and then have the meeting to discuss, this is where we see adjustments, this is what we would like to do.
That is correct. The city would have the ability to change course or change the value of the contract at any point, depending on what scope you want us to continue to perform.
You've had like three weeks around here to start calling people and saying, here's the meeting, the first date. Somebody may drop off, that's fine, that's okay if they do. But we're not being very proactive to get this committee up and going, that's my point. We're not being, and I don't find that acceptable, I'm sorry. Any other committee, we try to fill up and make sure we have, and we, for whatever reason, that's fine. We relied upon the business community to fill those roles, but we've had no communication up for at least three weeks. I don't find that to be very sincere in our efforts to try to get this thing going.
Council members, my concern that I would leave you with this afternoon is that I was contacted by a member of the business community today because there's a thirty-seven million-dollar wastewater contract going to be voted on this afternoon. We were not made aware of that, we were not consulted on that, and that is indicative of the lack of communication that we're hoping this committee and a cooperative, collaborative relationship will make sure that doesn't happen moving forward. I would also...
And I don't think it's just the chamber guys. You had Bill Bradbury today, who, is your citizen rep wondering when we're going to meet? That's, that's my point, is it's time we get this committee together, that's...
I agree, it's time, but let me remind everyone that July 24th was the meeting where we amended the makeup of the committee, and we increased it from about fifteen members to twenty-three members, twenty-two, twenty-three members. And at that meeting, we, in the write-up, we had meetings will begin as soon as engineering design firm is selected and be held monthly at a time and place set by city staff and consultation with members of the committee. So we increased, we're looking for six names, I guess, is what we're looking for, and we can set a meeting. Now, I'm not on the committee, so you have to set the meeting, Bob has to set the meeting, and as far as I'm concerned, if I were on the committee, I'd say, let's schedule a meeting for this coming Friday, and get it, get it on the calendar. July, in twenty, July 31st, if you'll remember, that was the fifth Monday of the month, we didn't have a meeting. So this is our first meeting.
What you're talking about was we added citizen, private citizens, we didn't add anybody else, we added...
No, we expanded.
We added one more major industrial, we agreed with that, and we, and you and...
And there was another wastewater engineer or something, and another...
Alls I'm asking for is a date, that's all I care. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think it's time we have a date when we're going to meet. You've got a large committee. Not everybody's going to be able to meet, obviously.
That's right, twenty-three people, it's, you're going to have some.
So let's at least get a date.
We will, we will sit down with Hazen.
The eleventh.
I think it's vitally important that Hazen be at the kickoff meeting, and we will get a date set.
Yes.
Again, I would leave the council with one thought, and that is, what is the, what is the perception that we're leaving with the business community who is asked to be at the table when they're invited to the first committee meeting after you have made a decision of thirty-seven...
Of who our engineering firm is.
And the cost, and the scope is described by Mr. Pingel a few minutes ago. What I'm asking you is to consider what message we're sending when we, when we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Going to shoot for this week, maybe, huh?
We have to work with Hazen, we need them available.
Especially for the early meetings. Yeah, it'd be great to have you in town, obviously. And you probably want to have a contract when you go to meet, I don't know. That's probably what I would want in hand if I was going to take time to meet with twenty-three other people in the committee, but...
You know, it's just, all this makes sense, I agree with the mayor, but what really makes sense is how careful we have to be with communication, because I don't know if everybody was on the same page that we had to have a committee meeting to review the contract that's before us today. And that was a miscommunication on all sides, by all people, I'm not going to point fingers, because that's not my style, but it was, it was, it could have been maybe better handled. There are a lot of things I can do better, I think there are a lot of things everybody can do better, but going forward, that just shows you how extremely important communication is going to be. Because I thought it was clear at the July 24th meeting, but that was just changing...
Mayor and council, I think the first good step is, we will do everything we can to make, I think it's tough to have a meeting without everyone appointed, because there's no quorum, there's no structure to it. We will do our best to get all the names and get everyone appointed on the agenda next Monday, and then we can go from there.
I appreciate that, so you're looking for six industrial user names?
Yes.
Six names. And the other thing that changed was, each of the sister cities will have a representative...
Correct.
On the committee.
And they've all been contacted and are willing to...
And Norso and the Dunes are not combined, they're separate.
No.
They're going to have separate representatives on this committee.
That's correct. And then we're waiting on an interested wastewater professional that's not affiliated, independent, not affiliated with any of our current...
Oh, that's right, an engineer.
Yep.
I was going to say, that's where I was like, we expanded it quite greatly, and I certainly...
But we'll do everything we can to get at least a quorum of the twenty-five appointed so that we can get a meeting scheduled.
An independent wastewater engineer.
Yes.
Call a question. Pass three to zero to one, and I abstain. Citizen concerns. Any citizen want to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address.
Mayor, can I ask, though, if you're abstaining on these items...
I will vote no today, if that's what you want me to do.
No, I just, I just had a question.
It's not a conflict of interest. I've said from the very beginning, until we got the committee formed, I was going to abstain on every issue, because I've been told by certain members of the staff that I have a prejudice, so...
The effect of an abstention without a stated conflict of interest is a no vote.
Okay, well, then I'll change my vote to no. Please record that in the record.
Because I guess my concern is, well, number one, I have multiple, I guess, but one of them is, if you're going to be serving on this committee, I want you to have a vested interest in its success and working with all of the people at the table, but if, and if it's a no vote, and you don't want to award this project or with them or move forward, it just is, it's very concerning to me, especially, I guess, when you're serving as one of our representatives, and then furthermore, when you're the only person sitting behind this bench that's went through this entire process. And so you could have been the leader to say, no, we needed to do it differently, or do this differently, and I haven't heard anything be changed, so I don't understand a no vote at this time, and it just has me, as a council member that has a very vested interest in making sure that we get this right, and that we have the best people on this, to hear the person that has went through this entire process before, that now it's a no vote, that's just very concerning to me.
Vote is no, as I told you last time. I'm not changing my story, it's the same as last time. I, I thought all along that we could have got this committee going, if we really wanted to get it going, we should, we could have had a meeting by now. I don't think there's any question. But I found something new today. Did you guys know all along Black &amp; Beach partnered up? I heard that McClure and Hazen were teamed up, but I'd never heard Black &amp; Beach's name before today. That was brand-new today. Did I miss that?
Yeah, I believe that was included in a council memo from early July. I believe we did a council memo in early July that outlined and said it was coming forward.
All right, citizen concerns.
Chris McGowan, Sulon Chamber of Commerce, 101 Pierce Street. I just wanted to compliment the city, the leadership, the staff on the efforts related to RagBri. Universally, we have heard positive things about the role that the community played. I want to specifically point out, I don't know that I know Kelly Bach, but there was an issue on Saturday afternoon related to a tripping hazard between the Promenade Theater and United Real Estate, and I called that to the attention of Matt Salvatore and just said, I'm concerned with the tens of thousands of people walking downtown, that this could present some liability and an issue. And Matt reached out to Kelly, and within about ninety minutes, that had been taken care of, and that's incredibly impressive, and I wanted to make sure that the council knew the work that Matt and Kelly and John Burns and the rest of the team did, the beautification efforts, the litter mitigation, the setup at the Long Lines Rec Center, that was an awful lot of work from a lot of different constituencies, and I think that the community definitely put its best foot forward. Congratulations to all involved.
Chris, while you are here, if you could give me an update, because one of them, for council concerns, I had brought up before and sent an email about in regards to RagBri, do we have an update from TSI on the lighting project? The city had allocated, I think, like forty, or I forget how many thousands. Do you have an update on that at all?
So, working with a local contractor who recommended that it couldn't be done in time for RagBri, he actually recommended an in-state but out-of-community contractor that they would like to partner with.
Okay.
The scope of that project, trying to focus on RagBri, changed when that deadline was too tight.
Sure, sure.
The consensus, councilman, was that if we tried to, if we tried to move that too expeditiously, mistakes would be made, and that we need to do this for the long term. What they did agree is that it needs to be LED. There are some questions about whether the railroad bridge can be included because of the time it takes to set that up and the coordination with the railroad. And then there's also conversations that I think you have city staff, and South Sioux has a city staffer, one on each, representing their various constituencies, trying to determine who pays for what and how all those things work. But we remain committed to it. We said that we would raise the money necessary to get this project across the finish line, but we'd rather do it right than right now.
And especially, yeah, and the railroad bridge makes sense, I think it'd be beautiful, but yeah, you probably got a lot more red tape, but at least with Long Lines, hopefully that can be an easier project. But I'm in full support, I said in the original email, I love the project. I spoke with members of your team on it before, and different architects that were excited about that, so I hope we can do it. I just didn't hear, so...
Yeah, I think the amount of money necessary for this...
Yeah, I think the amount of money necessary for this was something that everybody perceived as doable, and so we think this is a project that will in fact happen, probably not this fall, but beginning in the spring.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Julie.
I have nothing today.
Well, I don't mean to belabor this point, but I'm just finding myself very conflicted and very nervous that, Mayor, I want you to be on board with the project. And I remember listening in the meeting on the 24th very carefully, because I had great pause then of appointing someone to a committee that was abstaining on an item, and what you said in council concerns at that time was, anything relating to the committee you are going to abstain on.
No, I said.
But I just don't know then if.
You go ahead and serve on the committee.
No, I don't want to.
I said, up until the committee was formed, is what I said. So, I don't need to serve on this committee, you can gladly do it.
No, I want you, I want your leadership on the committee. I'm just asking you, if you're not willing to vote on, so that we have a firm to represent us until a group of citizens and industry partners meet, then I would have moved heaven and earth just to have at least an introductory meeting, so that the mayor of our city would feel comfortable voting on a $37 million project. That's all. I would have moved heaven and earth to have that meeting, I guess.
Before we vote on the contract?
Well, we have to have them in place, in my opinion, to say, look, they are who's going to be at the committee. I mean, at this point, they didn't even have that. So, no, I would vote on that and have them there, but if the committee needed to be formed, and you had to have the names in order for the mayor to feel like he could make that decision, or at least vote on it, I'm confused by the whole thing, but no other concerns, I'm good.
Dan?
I have a lot, but I don't think it's probably appropriate to.
No, go for it, we're early.
Well, I mean, I understand where the mayor's coming from, Alex, and it was about the committee and the process of the committee. And unfortunately, we had a lot of miscommunication with all groups, as I said. And so, sometimes a vote will be taken, and it's because we haven't had a committee meeting, we haven't been able to have that gathering. The reason why you piqued my interest, I'll just be real transparent, is I voted in the majority. That means, as a majority vote, yes, I could vote, I could make a motion to reconsider, if you wanted to have that meeting with Hazen, with the committee, once the committee's formed. But I still think, I mean, the July 24th meeting was not attended by a lot of people. In the July 24th meeting, we expanded the committee, and I'll have to look at it again, Mr. Padmore, but I'm pretty sure we had in there that the order of how things were going to happen, we get the.
Yeah, the intent was to always have the meeting after the engineer was hired.
Which makes perfect sense to me.
That's what.
That was my understanding too, but then when something's thrown out as strong as it has been, you know, you do start to wonder about it.
I know there's a lot of concern about the sizing and other aspects, that in pre-treatment and other aspects, we need our engineer in place to understand where the industries are coming from and what they plan on doing, so that then we can proceed with a design that accommodates changes that they might propose.
Because only until they've been selected, would they be able to make those changes?
Yes.
So if you had a committee that was saying, oh, we should be doing this, or we shouldn't be doing this, well, if you don't have an engineering firm that says, okay, well, we might be able to work on this.
And I don't want to speak for Hazen and Sawyer, but the first five or six months are going to be spent getting input on what the intent of major industries in the city is going forward, probably before they start to design anything other than the various life safety things that regardless of it's an ounce or a million gallons, we need to have repaired and replaced.
Exactly. Exactly. That's the way I follow it as well. And yeah, Hazen does too, so, you know, I just, you just have to be really careful going forward. I mean, that's the bottom line for me, is to be careful. I want the mayor to be on that committee. I wish we wouldn't have any more, you can say whatever you want, of course, I'm not asking you to do otherwise, but I want the mayor on that committee, he needs to serve on that committee. He comes with the history and the historical.
I 100% agree.
So, I just took the mayor's comments, right or wrong, I took the comments, it was just being upset about the way the committee formation has come together. But it was July 24th that we made that last amendment to the committee makeup, and that we didn't have a meeting on July 31st.
Well, no, and I know, and it's, but it's more than that. I mean, I think he abstained on the rate increase vote as well, and so that's where, if you don't have skin in the game, I just really worried about the execution of that. I want to see it successful, because I voted, because I believe in what people are telling us about this project and the urgency to do it. And so I don't, and I mean, as far as the committee, there were a million different meetings of why it's been delayed. We put it forth, it was on the website, people applied to be a part of it, then we were told, no, those industry people can't be a part of it, because the chamber wants to select and work with Doug Skinner and those crew that have. So then you guys had a meeting with them, then we had to change the scope of it, like, I think there are 9 million reasons why we haven't had a meeting yet.
Well, I asked for that meeting, because I wanted to get it to start moving forward, why I did that. Bottom line for me is, I'm very comfortable with the mayor and with Councilmember Shaner serving on this committee. I think they will serve well, I think there'll be a lot of good discussions, and we have to just keep moving forward. We just have to keep moving forward.
I agree. And I think they'd be great on it as well.
I'll be quiet, because I've had a lot of criticism of me, and I, you know, and no one appreciates being criticized, especially if you don't think it's a fair, a fair pick, what's going on.
What we think is, right?
But I'm very comfortable with you two, and that's all I'm going to say. I mean, I've said enough. So, thank you, Mayor.
Move we adjourn. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.